Alan, could you start the live stream please? Just let me know once that's going. Thank you Alan. Right, we've got a new member who's joined us on the board today, which is Maureen Viera, is that?
Correct.
That's a good start for today anyway, who's replacing Fiona Baker as the D2N2 LEP rep. So Maureen, if I just ask you to just introduce yourself to everybody, please.
Good morning, everybody. I'm the Head of Corporate Services for the D2N2 LEP, replacing Fiona.
Short and sweet. Thank you very much. Tony, can I just ask if you could keep your camera and microphone off if you're not speaking, please?
Yeah, of course, Richard, sorry.
Thank you very much, Tony. So first item on the agenda, can we have apologies for absence, please, Angelica?
Yes, we've just got apologies from Stella Scott and Andrew Mitchell.
Thank you very much. Declarations of interest? If there are any declarations that we haven't previously had, if people could just make us aware of those, please. And I can't see anything there, so we'd say that no declarations of interest raised. If we could go on to the minutes of the previous meeting, everybody's had a copy of the minutes. So if I could just ask if anyone has any issues with the minutes, if they could make them known, please. I can't see any hands raised there. So if I could have a forwarder to...
Yeah, happy to move those.
Thank you. And Maggie Teseckin, that's great. And if we have no objections, we'll have those moved as a true record. Thank you. We get on to the main business of the meeting. So first of all, an update on programme milestones. I believe, Steve, are you going to present this for us?
Yes, thank you Chair.
Thanks, Stephen.
So the report is in front of members. You'll recall from the previous board meeting that we're now working to a slightly compressed timetable in order to meet the government's revised deadlines for project summary submissions. The stable block managed workspace units were due to have submitted, to achieved consent for their planning application in January. That's been deferred to February. I can confirm that's definitely going to February Planning Committee because in my role as Head of Planning, I've just signed that report off to go to the committee. So that will be on the 6th of February, that that planning application will be considered. In terms of the West Park Leisure Hub, we had the first tranche of government funding released in this month, which was, members will recall, is a month behind the government's original that process. However, the submission of completion of designs, commencement of construction and planning is still deferred, awaiting conclusion of the way forward on the associated bridge design elements. In terms of the various business case approval processes, we have received and submitted a business case of the Long Eaton High Street to our external appraiser for assessment. And that was on time in December. And we've also received and been able to submit for external appraisal, the business case for the Long Eaton Walking and Cycling Network, though that was only in January, so not on target. So those two are, one running to time, the other running slightly behind time. And for reasons set out later on this agenda, we've received an outline business case for the Derby Road junctions project, but we have not progressed that to external appraisal. I'm happy to answer any questions, Chair.
Has anybody got anything that they'd like to ask, Steve? I can't see any hands raised, Steve, but could I just ask, is there anything that you're aware of that poses problems for hitting the, or now the very imminent government deadlines?
The two live business cases we have yet to get through process in order to achieve project summary, they are both in progress, but I'm not going to mislead the board in saying that they're absolutely guaranteed to get through to in February. You can see from the milestones report that the High Street business case is on target and that the Walking and Cycling Network business case was slightly behind. And I think that reflects the position as of today in terms of the progress of those business cases. So I'm still anticipating that the Long Eaton High Street project will progress on time and I have to raise that there's going to be a question mark about whether the Walking and Cycling Network manages to get to February Board, which would raise the possibility of the slippage to March Board. And I'm just raising that as a possibility at this stage. So you know, board are aware of the pressures within that system. We have two different business case writers here, so that means that we've got double capacity. You know, there's no conflict in that sense, but we have one external assessor and it's getting these projects through external assessment. And just for, you know, the board's awareness, we've never had a single business case go through the assessor at the first ask. We have a very thorough external appraiser of business cases. That's a deliberate and necessary process. But as we'll no doubt be returning to later on this agenda, signing off the business case is not a tick box process. It's a thorough and involved procedure and it always involves additional work.
Thanks, Steve. I am right, though, in saying that if it slips to March, that's absolutely last chance saloon, isn't it? There is nowhere to go after that.
Absolutely, which is, Chair, why we've been endeavouring to get things to... Our goal is to get everything before the board in February, because you're quite correct. Once we get to March Board meeting, it's the end of the line.
Thank you, Steve. James Gradory.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Steve. Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the update, Steve. Steve, just a quick question. Is there any more that board members need to do or could do to smooth the path and support you and your team in your work?
Well, many thanks for that question, James. We're very much focused at this stage on these business case processes and getting them through that process. It's a very technical part of the whole town deal procedure. And as I think I might have alluded to, one of the issues is the size of the pipe, as it were, in terms of getting these projects through. And regrettably, additional hands at the deck isn't really necessarily going to be an assistance in this case. It's getting things sequenced in an appropriate way. My colleague Jill Stewart is on the call, is working rather feverishly on this issue and in particular liaising between business case writers and the external insurers to ensure that that communication is clear so that we can get towards those positive outputs.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, James. Carol Hart, councillor Hart.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I mean, I think that, you know, it's one of those things, I think the champions are dying to get involved and want to do more. And I know that, you know, that, Steve, you know, you will involve them as much as you can, but there are certain things, unfortunately, that officers have to do, isn't it? And it's, yeah, so I can understand, I know, you know, one, two of the champions feel as though they really would like to get more involved, but it is at that stage where really there's not an awful lot that they can do, is it? It's the background work that you're doing. So, yeah, just to sort of say, you know, I think that we will use the champions as much as we can and in any way that we can, especially to get the message out there to the residents as well as to what is happening. So it was just an observation.
Thanks, Carol. Has anyone got any other questions for Steve on the programme milestones? Okay, thank you very much. If we can move on to the next hour or two, which is the project adjustment to the Derby Road junctions, commonly known as Long Eaton Green project. Steve, if you want to carry on with that then, please.
Thank you, Chair. This is an example of how the business case and project summary process is far more than just a tick box procedural element. It's actually a functional and necessary part of the control of the public funds that we are entrusted with through the town deal process. The report, which is in front of members, which I hope many members will have read, fundamentally, the business case that has been produced for the Derby Road junctions project has concluded that there are insufficient public benefits for the project to proceed. Now, to put that in the simplest of terms, it's not worth taxpayers' money to pay for the scheme because the taxpayer won't get sufficient benefits back for their investment. Now, there's a whole set of technical reasons that this has arisen and I will outline them. I'll start with the proposition that we always knew we would have to look to non-transport benefits for this project to help support the business case. The business case process did find over £3 million of non-transport benefits. That's benefits essentially to health and to the functioning of the town centre from an improved town centre gateway. The problem is that it couldn't find additional transport benefits and £3 million of benefits does not cover the cost of carrying out the works. And essentially, this business case process and the value for money assessment is all about, does the value of the scheme outweigh the cost of the scheme? It's fairly straightforward in that sense. Now, a highway scheme classically looks to highways' outputs in order to justify its progress. And those outputs normally come in two forms. They come in the form of time saving and they come in the form of accident reduction. Now, when we consulted on this project to the wider public, what the public told us was they wanted a scheme that would address the gridlock that occurs at these junctions at peak times. And that's the scheme that was designed and tested through the business case process. And the scheme proposed did address congestion at peak times, but at the expense of free flowing traffic outside of peak times. Because essentially what we have at the moment is a roundabout system that is free flowing outside of peak times, but experiences gridlock during peak times. Once you have a roundabout system, the only sort of way to go with a junction is to introduce a traffic light control approach. That can guarantee junction function during peak times, avoiding the gridlock, but it induces delays outside of the peak time, outside of those peak times. And the Treasury model for assessing these things considers all of those time savings and time delays in the round as a whole. Putting it in terms which I'm sure many members of the public have heard before, when they've pursued sort of transport improvements, the essential problem is that Derby Road junctions isn't bad enough in that though many people on the board will have the experience of dealing with a junction when it's in failure and of the difficulties that causes, it isn't in failure for a long enough period of the day. But the benefits of dealing with that failure to have added up to an overall time saving. So that classic source of business case benefits from a junction scheme weren't available to this scheme. Now, we had anticipated that there would be benefits from accident reduction because we're aware that historically the Long Eaton Green has been an accident black spot and the junction improvements would have, we would have anticipated to have reduced accidents. However, in actual fact, over the last five years, the Derby Road junctions have been safer than average than we would expect from a junction of their design, which I think is a good testimony to the care and consideration of drivers and pedestrians and cyclists in the Long Eaton area and their use of that junction. But what it means is that there isn't an accident problem which the junction improvements could solve. So there is no financial benefit on the safety side of the argument either, which was an unexpected result. And it just reflects the fact that though this junction was a national accident black spot recognised some over five years ago, in the last five years, we've actually had a relatively good safety record. And that's effectively what's avoided, prevented additional benefits being found from that element of the assessment. So regrettably, we have to come to the conclusion that it's not value for money to invest taxpayers' money at this time in the improvements that have been designed for the Long Eaton Green project. Chair, would you like me to pause there to see if there are any questions on that front?
I think that's sensible, Steve. If we go to Orne Morris first. Orne?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Mention has been made in the report of an improved environment, which I'm not thinking of the roundabouts so much, but pavements would be widened, Derby Road would be, you know, narrowed as a road and with much friendlier to the pedestrians. And I think, is it that Derby Road was going to be 20 mile an hour limit, Steve?
The 20 mile an hour proposals, which are currently being progressed by the county council, are actually a separate issue. In that, and I don't know if there's anyone from the county council here who wants to talk to the 20 mile an hour pilot project for Long Eaton. I'd be happy to defer to them if there's anyone in the county council who does want to talk to that. Now, it would actually have had some good synergy with this project, Orne, because I think, as you're rightly saying, there definitely was a view that that would work, that the new layout of the Derby Road would have worked with that. And indeed, I think most users will probably be aware that from the canal bridge up to the railway bridge, it's pretty rare for traffic to do much more than 20 miles an hour under any circumstances.
Yeah, yeah.
So actually, for that stretch of the road, it wouldn't have been such a revolution to say that it would be a 20 mile an hour limit. So that certainly was part of the design and that's where the benefits came from, you know, the benefits of the enhanced environment in that area. It was just sadly that the benefits weren't adequate or fully outweigh the costs.
Is there anything in the calculation about 20 mile an hour accidents being less fatal, if you like, less critical, dangerous?
The assessment did take into account the whole, the accident scenario, as I understand it. And, you know, like you, Orne, I think, you know, we're all, given that this is a project that we've been pursuing for some time, we will have some expectations that there were going to be these sorts of benefits, you know, available from the scheme. And it's disappointing that having gone out to an external transport expert to appraise the scheme, that they've been unable to identify sufficient benefits to counter the costs. Though these are all the things which we did see as being part of the benefit, absolutely. You know, that's, and that's why I'm saying we were a bit surprised. We knew there would be struggle on the time saving front, but we were a bit surprised on the accident front. We'd really hoped that there would have been some accident reduction benefits here. But unfortunately, the folk of Long Eaton are too damn careful and they haven't been having accidents on the road. And that's, in essence, is what has been found.
Okay, Steve, Tony King's got his hand up. I don't know whether, Tony, do you want to say something from, about the proposed 20 mile an hour scheme?
Yeah, I noticed Carol's also got a hand up. I mean, my comment is that I don't think we should get confused with the 20 mile an hour, with the 20 mile an hour scheme. There are two areas within Derbyshire that we're trialling 20 mile an hour limits. And obviously, we will be looking at the outcomes of those and looking at a way forward for more general use. So in other words, it's an entirely coincidence, I think, that we have the town deal, the town deal programme and the 20 mile an hour, and the 20 mile an hour trial exercise. So please, let's not get those two confused.
Thanks, Tony. Carol, do you want to just comment on that as well, please?
Yeah, just to bring you up to date. The problem is that, you know, Orne just mentioned about safety and accidents and everything else and 20 mile an hour. You know, we've got this big thing, twenties, plenty and that sort of thing. There have been some trials and different things across Derbyshire, but, you know, basically, it's not been very good. And I think that although it's not part of the town deal, because part of the town deal as well, we're looking at the cycling, walking, I think that probably swayed highways to look at Long Eaton, because as I say, we are doing some work on there. But really, basically, it is out for consultation, just people talking, whether, you know, a lot of people for it, a lot of people against it. It is that consultation, but it really, if it did go ahead, and there's no certainty yet, but if it did go ahead, what they want to do is to look at the benefits at the end of quite a long trial period. And that, but so that won't really tie in with our town deal. So, but, you know, hopefully, there is consultation going on and hopefully people will be responding. And, you know, there is going to be some exhibition and all there'll be offices available in the town hall in the next, I think it's probably a couple of weeks to answer any queries. But basically, it is just, in one way, it is to do with the Long Eaton because they knew about the cycling and walking and what we're trying to do. But at the same time, it's also to try and do some meaningful tests and trials and see whether it works. But whether, as I say, it will carry on, we've just got to finish, you know, they'll do the consultation and see what the feedback is from the residents. Okay?
Thank you, Carol. Orne, are you happy with that as an answer to your question before we move on to other people?
Well, yeah, I suppose so. It's, it would have been an improved environment for Derby Road and it's going to be an improved environment for Tamworth Road, probably, as a result of all this. But and then I'm interested in the trial for the 20 miles an hour because that's going to save lives, I think, anyway. But yeah, thanks for the answers.
Thank you, board. Stuart Allen.
Chair, I'm curious to know if there's any recommendations that's come out of the ACOM report, which will be taken up. The congestion on Derby Road substantially influences...
Stuart, I'm sorry, I'm really struggling to hear you. I don't know, can you adjust your microphone or?
Stuart, if you lift your microphone up, because it's under your chin at the moment.
All right, okay. Is that any better?
That is, that is better, yes.
All right, okay, super. Sorry about that. Yeah, so the congestion on Derby Road largely influences the congestion at the green. So I'm curious to know if there's any recommendations such as reducing the time that the pedestrian lights go to red. It's quite ridiculous at the moment. Are there any recommendations? Because traffic quite often gets stuck in the main road, trying to get into the side roads. Now, is there any recommendation to pair up the side roads into one-way systems which would relieve that? Now, finally, for over a decade, I've written to DCC suggesting that you couldn't cure the congestion at the green, but you could make it a hell of a lot less of an aggravation for users by introducing some crosshatched areas around the roundabout so that people just don't block it. Now, that would take, cost very little money, some paint and some signs and reduce the frustration of a lot of the users of the roundabout. They would actually want to flow through. They're often being blocked by ignorant motorists just sitting across the island. So that's my question.
Thank you, Stuart. Stuart, I think before we ask for an answer to that, Pete, I think you've got a similar point that you wanted to raise. So Pete Wern.
Thank you, Chair. Sure that I've seen in my travels around the country occasional part-time traffic lights. And I assume the junction is far too big to consider this, but I just wondered what the experience is, whether it's possible to have traffic lights turn on during peak times or even to pick up what the traffic conditions are at the time so we could have the benefit of this scheme.
Okay, thank you, Pete, and thank you, Stuart. Steve, do you want to explain the mechanics around this?
I'll kick off. I'm delighted to see Joe Batty has put his camera on because my first line was going to be, this is the point where I have to explain that I'm not a highway engineer.
Don't get your hopes up, Steve, because neither am I, but I'll do my best.
But what I will just set out is where we've got to in terms of the town deal and the business case process and the government's deadlines. Now, the ACOM, who are the consultants employed to assess the business case for the Long Eaton Green, were assessing the business case for Long Eaton Green and they weren't contracted and they haven't provided a set of alternative recommendations. If we were, had we been in this position some time ago, or had the government not contracted the time scale of the town deal process, I think we would at this stage have said, well, is there an alternative scheme that we can look at that would achieve a set of benefits that can be done and for which we can get a positive business case for? And the problem is that we simply haven't got the time to design a new scheme, write a new business case and have that business case appraised and get through the approval process. It's, I have to say, it's not a satisfactory situation for us to be in and I'm fully acknowledge that. But, you know, regretfully, you know, that is where we are. I'm not going to sort of try to dispel any of the suggestions that have been made here because to do that would require, you know, that vigorous process of design, costing, benefit assessment. And then regretfully, we've just not got, in the position that we're in right now and in the context of the questions I was asked in respect to the milestone process earlier, there simply isn't the timetable left to do that reappraisal, which is where we are. Joe, did you want me to defer for comment to you? I'd be happy to.
Thanks, Steve. And I shall do my best. And actually, for a non-highways expert, you did an excellent job, I think, of summarising the considerations that had been applied to get to the disappointing recommendation around the specific scheme proposal going forward. So just, just general, I'll pick up a couple of other points. Absolutely take your point, Orne, that, yeah, some aspects of the Derby Road scheme would have improved the general quality of the public realm and the environment. Unfortunately, as Steve articulated, those don't translate into transport benefits and that's what we have to prove with any business case going forward on Derby Road, which is the congestion issues that... the congestion issues, the road safety, et cetera, as Steve outlined. So, yeah, accepted, you know, public realm, the, the quality of the general environment would have been improved, but, but that doesn't directly translate into a quantifiable transport benefit. A couple of people mentioned sort of hatching and, and temporary signals. Like Steve said, those haven't been assessed as part of any alternative proposal going forward. But I think the one thing that disappointed though, the recommendation is the one thing that has come out of this piece of work is the profile of Derby Road and the general sort of highway conditions and traffic issues. And what I would propose is although we don't have time to pull together a, a new business case, we do have the, the sort of genesis of really good partnership conversations going forward on looking at some wider alternatives. They would all have to slip into a capital programme, but there's nothing to say that we can't ask our highways colleagues to look at some of the suggestions. First of all, at headline level, would they be workable? And I'm no highways expert either, I'm no engineer. And there'll be all sorts of modelling, even hatching. Unfortunately, isn't a case of a tin of yellow paint, although, you know, there's times that I'd like to think it was. And things have to be modelled in terms of what the impact is on traffic flow, et cetera. But I do think what we've got is the start of a, a, an ongoing conversation that could pick up some of these suggestions, have a look at them and see if there's any that have got legs to, to move forward. It would sit outside of the town deal programme. Obviously, we'd have to find the funding, but I think there's enough of a, of an indication of some, some concerns that, that need exploring further on alternatives that, that warrant that ongoing dialogue with Steve and his team and, and our highways guys. Hope that sort of brings some of it together. You know, again, not the, the absolute answer that perhaps you were hoping for, but I think we've got some opportunities going forward.
Thank you very much, Joe. And it's good to hear, you know, the ongoing cooperation and collaboration between the, the different parts of, of government. So, you know, that, that is very encouraging, but absolutely, you know, it sits outside the Townstone process now. So thank you for that. councillor Michael Powell.
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's with huge disappointment for me personally, and I'm sure for many people who are expecting some changes. But I want to say that I think the presentation that Steve made was excellent. We can't take that away. It's a great presentation. And more latterly, what Joe Battie has said, I just hoped that we might get, and I hope the two main DCC people are listening, the two things that cause a lot of delay and not at the peak hours are the two pedestrian crossings on Derby Road. And I feel sure, and I would hope the DCC could have another look, the timing of them for the pedestrians crossing are both different and they seem to have allowed a lot longer time on the one furthest from the town, which is, gets less pedestrians than the one that's nearer the town. The other areas that I'm so disappointed is about the bus stops and the places. And there might be something we can do with the bus operators. For example, the yellow bus leaving the green area, the, the place where they stop, they can be there five minutes or more because it's the end of their journey, but it blocks the Derby Road going towards, you know, the Breeston End and so on. I just hope somebody might do some simpler and cheaper things. I have to entirely accept that we're not going to be able to do it through the town bid, but I don't want to quite give up some of these simpler things. And I am sure that DCC transport operators and the bus companies could make some low-cost changes to things, particularly the yellow bus that parks at the end for at least five minutes. They could have a different place to do their end of run. I don't know what the technical name is. So that's what I hope. I am disappointed, but I think you've heard a really good presentation and we've heard some good things from the, the other members of the board. And we, we have to, to move on. There's no chance of changing the main thing now, as we've said, we're out of time, so we can't do anything about that. So thank you for those comments.
Thank you, Michael. I, I have to say that the, the good thing that I think has come out of this is the collaboration between DCC and EBC. And, you know, if that continues, if that continues outside of the Townstone project, you know, and can deliver some benefits, that's, that's been a good result for the, all the effort that has actually been put in to this. Tony King.
Yeah, but yeah, can I say that, sitting here, I've noted all these comments and I will take them back to DCC and I will see what, what can, can be done. It's not my portfolio, but I will ensure that the portfolio holder is aware of the comments and, and, and the various aspects of this. And let me see if we can push something forward on them. Okay?
I appreciate that. Thank you, Tony. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to ask Steve on the, on this, this aspect? So the actual Derby Road junctions before we move on to talk about reallocation of funding? Carol Hart.
Yeah, I just wondered whether everybody's looking in the chat bar. I'd already put, I've taken it with highways. Joe is also taking notes. And, you know, although this project won't go through, there would still be, could some, you know, some work could be done on that junction to improve and we'll work with highways. I mean, it wouldn't happen overnight, as Joe said, have to go in a capital programme, but there's no reason why we can't do some work on that if this project isn't going through. So just to make sure, as I say, I don't know whether everybody reads the chat bar. Okay?
Thanks, Carol. Okay, if we could go back to you then, Steve, to talk about the reallocation of the funding, please.
Thank you, Chair. So clearly, if we can't progress this project, the first option is we could hand the 6.93 million pounds allocated to it back to HM Treasury. But there is the opportunity, as we've taken under previous circumstances, to actually reallocate that town deal funding to other projects which can demonstrate value for money for that expenditure. So the, the proposals in front of the board are principally to look in the first instance at the Long Eaton High Street project. This project, of course, hasn't yet been to you as a project summary. It's due to come to you in February. We've had the initial business case work back from ACOM, the same consultants who've been working on the Derby Road junctions. And they believe that they have been able to find significant benefits from, from that scheme. Essentially, again, they're not transport benefits, it's benefits to the function of the town centre because of all the, the commercial properties that would benefit from the improved environment that would be produced. Now, in addition to looking strictly at the high street element, we also asked them to look at the potential for an extension project to Tamworth Road. So this would involve pavement widening on, and environmental improvements on Tamworth Road, which of course is an active shopping street with a, a number of important town centre facilities in that location. And their initial feedback is that, from, from the business case appraisal, is that that too would be value for money if we pursued that route. So that is why there is a recommendation that we allocate some 3.43 million of the the former Derby Road junctions funds in order to initiate, to enable the High Street project to be extended to also address High Street and Tamworth Road. Do you want to run through all of this, Chair?
Yeah, no, I was going to say, I, I think it's better if we ask questions on the individual ones. And, you know, certainly I would like, you know, just to ask you to make absolutely clear, the Tamworth Road is additional work. So this, this isn't just allowing for inflation for Derby Road, it's additional work that was looked at, it's been through the business case process and it's work that we can do.
Absolutely. It's a fundamental extension to the project. It, it's going back some time, but board members might remember, you know, over a year ago, we did some, we did some initial work looking at this and it was principally around the concept that we needed to tie the whole town centre together as a single functional entity and to improve the linkages heading west, out, you know, towards West Park and this central strategic aim, which was to make the boast of the twin assets of the town centre being both the town centre and the West Park facility. And that actually, an improvement to Tamworth Road would help us to, to, to make that linkage. That's what initiated some of that work. Board members might also recall some of the difficulties we had during Covid pandemic with queues forming outside banks, making it impossible to, to navigate the existing narrow pavements, which I think kind of reminded us that they're not really at a functional standard for a, a, a town centre environment at the moment. But absolutely, Chair, the fundamental point is, this is effectively, this is an additional project and an, and an extension of the scope and not just putting money more into more inflation management. The, the cost assessments that we put into the High Street have, following the last adjustments, have actually proven to be quite accurate. So we've, we've got a lot more confidence around the, the High Street costs.
Thank you, Steve. Vaughn, you've got your hand up. But you've turned your camera back on now.
Yeah, sorry, I forgot about that.
No worries.
Just a simple one, the extent of Tamworth Road, because Tamworth Road goes all the way to the River Trent. And I just wondered, how far are we going with it, Steve?
That, that, a very good question, Vaughn. Not the River Trent. Now, I might have to defer to my colleague, Tom Haddock. Thank you very much, Tom. I'm delighted to see, to see that, that hand. Could you advise us?
Fine, yes. The scheme wraps around back towards the Derby Road junction improvements. It would have interfaced with those. It falls just short of Oxford Street. It extends past the, if you can picture the post office with the, the wide expanse and the sort of amenity space outside of the, the post office on Tamworth Road, round the corner, not quite as far as, as Broad Street, but in that direction. And then obviously on the opposite side of the Carriageway, it picks up all of those shops round to the sort of beacon filled streets in that area there. Hope that answers the question.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Yeah, that's got me, I've got a picture of it now. Thanks.
So, Andrew Slavell. You're, you're on mute, Andrew.
Sorry, can you see me or not?
Yes, we can, yeah.
Oh, that's fine. I can't see myself, that's all. I'm just wondering with this new scheme that's, that's, well, or the, the change in, in direction of the scheme and going down Tamworth Road, will, will we get to see any, any of the proposed design work that, so that we know that, what, what we're going to be talking about? Because I, I've not seen anything on the, on the Derby Road ones and I, I feel a little, I mean, it might have been before my time on the board, but I don't remember seeing any design work for the Derby Road ones, but, but I'll, I'll bear to greater knowledge on it. But, but it would be nice if we could see some design work on, on any proposals going forward on Tamworth Road. And just as an aside, I think with the way that the banks are shutting, I think any queues outside banks will disappear.
Thanks, Andrew. Steve, is this one for you or for Tom?
It, it could be for either of us because I think the fundamental answer is about at what stage we'll actually get detailed designs. At the moment, the, the effective designs is, effectively lines on an aerial plan indicating maybe how wide the pavements could be, but nothing further than that. The, the next part of these processes is actually going to be the critical design stage. So, Tom, do you want to pick that up?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the, the main purpose of this discussion now is to reallocate the funds, take the point on board that members of the board need to be quite clear about what, what the scheme includes. And obviously, there is the, the opportunity at next month where the, we're hoping that the, the business case and indeed the project summary document will be back in front of the board for the project. And at that meeting, I'd be happy to share a plan. As Steve suggests, though, it is only sort of indicative of the areas and the, the footway sort of widths that will be looked at as part of the scheme. It doesn't include that detail. There will be an opportunity to engage with sort of key stakeholders at the next step, which will be the, the more detailed design phase should the, the application to government be successful.
Thank you for clarifying that, Tom. Are there any other questions regarding the reallocation of funding for the High Street and Tamworth Road? So do you want to move on to the next one then, please?
Thank you. So the next project that we are recommending that there's additional money allocated to is the walking and cycling project. Now, I'm very conscious that, you know, we've had a lot of debate about the walking cycling project and indeed a, a series of budget adjustments to this. As part of the process of putting together an, an actual business case for external appraisal, we revisited what the costings of the, of these elements are. And I think it's fair to say that we've raised an eyebrow at what.
Was for the bridge in the first place. I'm afraid I floundered a little bit in your absence, but I, I don't know whether there was an assessment of need or whether there was any sort of survey of the local, local population.
Right, so the, the Britannia, we're talking Britannia Road Bridge.
It is Britannia Road, yeah.
So the Britannia Road Bridge project has been, well, has been running as, as a notional concept well before the town deal process. It emerged in original investigations of the development opportunities of the Britannia Mills site. It was then identified at a regional level in terms of looking at walking and cycling connectivity, particularly to the proposed Toton HS2 hub station as being a, a critical piece of infrastructure. Now, clearly, the, there won't, there isn't currently a proposed HS2 hub station at Toton, but nonetheless, there is a strong transport logic for it, which is that the population of northern Long Eaton live on the wrong side of the canal to the tow path, so they can't get access to it except at the existing bridging points, which in this case is Dockhome Lock, which is about two kilometres, if I'm not mistaken, north of the 6005 Derby Road. So this would provide an intervening bridging point which would put access to the canal, it would basically, about a population of about three to six thousand people would, would get a direct access which they wouldn't previously have had. So that was the notional assessment. That's now been put through the external business case process and that is also in area of Long Eaton that's north of, of, of the VA 6005 Derby Road.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, Steve, can I just clarify? So this has actually been through external review and they, they've actually come back with the benefits for this?
We have a draft external business case that has been subject to challenge from our external appraiser and is going through a modification process.
Thank you, Steve. Vaughn Morris.
Thanks, Richard. All I wanted to know, kind of rough numbers, when Broad Street Bridge was repaired last, there were a few different options, basic repair, intermediate and, you know, long-term replacement, I think. And I forget the numbers, what the figure. you know, long-term replacement, I think. And I forget the numbers, what the figure being considered at that stage was for replacing Broad Street Bridge.
I'll defer to Tom, who's the person who carried out that work.
In it, in its existing position.
Um I don't have that information to hand. It was some time ago. I think the report you're referring to was circa um two thousand and eleven. Um I'd have to dig out the replacement cost that was put forward at that time. I would suggest that in line with the ACON costs, that that figure will have dramatically changed. Um because of inflation, because construction costs are rising so, so vastly in, in that time. Um in terms of the maintenance costs you, you referred to, um the council spent somewhere in the region of thirty thousand pounds um undertaking refurbishment to a lot of the lattice work, a lot of the steel structure, um some repairs to the um, the concrete that was spalling, you'll recall, off the, the underside of the bridge. Um there was an option at that stage to do a more comprehensive refurbishment. Um off memory, that figure was somewhere in the region of a hundred and fifty thousand pounds. Um at that time, though, because of the existing um failings of the bridge in terms of its design, in terms of its limitations with the, the limited height over the tow path. Um the council determined that it wasn't wise to invest such a hefty sum of money um in something that had some inherent design problems. Um so it concluded that the um, the lesser option in terms of those refurbishment costs was the one to go with in the hope that there'll be some funding come forward to, to replace the bridge.
Yes, I'm, I'm just for Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, Vaughn. I was just saying, and just for confirmation, we've actually have, the business case process is actually appraising all of these options. It's, it's looking at all, all the options for the replacement of the Broad Street Bridge area because we know that there's still a debate around how, how we should address the issue. So we're
Okay, yeah.
Nothing's off the table at this stage in the business case process.
That's what I was interested in, just in perspective, what, what um a straightforward crossing bridge would cost compared to the diagonal bridge that's proposed, that's all. Yeah, that's what I'd like to have in mind.
And we're, we're, we're assessing all of those. I think if I can return back to where um I disappeared from you all, what I was trying to, to get, and I'm not sure if, the point I was really trying to cover is that the cost of any bridge over the canal is now clearly significantly in excess of what we'd originally anticipated. Uh which is some for, uh is quite frustrating, I have to say, given that um we've already been to this board uh twice before, I think, talking about what the cost of a walking and cycling project is. But again, this is the, this is one of the purposes of going through a formal business case process. But it requires you to meet certain data standards so that you've got a clarity about where you're going. Now, we always knew bridges were going to be very vulnerable to inflation because essentially they're steel-based structures. Um and steel is an energy-intensive product and we know that it's in energy cost where there's been the highest levels of inflation. However, I, I have to be straight with the board and indicate that the cost inflation on these has been well in excess of just inflation. And it, it's apparent that the original estimates that we had didn't include all the construction elements that were necessary. Uh we're confident now that the new estimates that we've got do cover all of those elements. Um and we're also confident that despite the, the higher cost that's been found, there are still significant benefits. Um for example, one of the things that is coming out of the business case works, casework so far is that the, even the existing bridge at Broad Street has a very high existing value um in, in public benefit terms. So we're, we're aware that there are bar significant, there are significant benefits which are highly likely to be able to justify these levels of cost. However, what what's clear is that the costs are exceeding the budget to date. So in order to be able to deliver two bridges, which is what I understand that the, as the boards debated at extent in the past, is what we want to achieve. There's a requirement for additional budget um within that walking and cycling project.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Thanks.
Oh, thanks, Steve. Um Stuart Allen?
Yes, um I have a question for Michael Lucking. Um but first I'll have to explain why. Whilst crossing Broad Street Bridge, I frequently asked by visiting cyclists, how do I get to the tow path? So six years ago, the Friends of West Park designed a simple bridge south of the lock solely to provide connectivity to the tow path. The Friends of West Park tried to raise two hundred and fifty thousand at that time, but we failed. We asked EBC for a thousand pounds to employ a professional fundraiser, but this was refused. So about two years ago, I was in Michael's office together with Peter Dawson outlining possible bridge designs. They were very interested in the bridge at the lock, but at the time I didn't comprehend their agenda. Peter said that if the bridge was built at the lock, he would, if redeveloping the strip, the factory strip, make provision for a passageway direct from the lock to Milner Street. So my question is, if option three is built, will they enter into a binding legal agreement with EBC that when the factory strip is redeveloped, they'll deed a strip of land, including a mandate for any sale to a third-party developer? So this would mean that pedestrians no longer went along the tow path. They go direct to Milner Street and it would reduce my opposition a little to option three. So following on from this, we cross Broad Street Bridge for at least once a week en route to the library and the shops. Now, despite it being narrow, ninety-five percent of cyclists refuse to dismount. They wobble up the ramps, have been hit twice, and they speed down the ramps. So considering the next hundred years on behalf of the community, I'm refusing to accept a bridge for option three that less than three point five metres wide, just reducing in width at the very far end at the lock. So I further ask Michael and Peter, will they agree a little extra land near the lock on the basis that Gagarin creates a design that can easily be modified later to the full width, just to the few last many metres at the lock? I would think that by next meeting, they could come up with a yes or no. Thank you.
Um but thank you for raising those points, Stuart. Um I don't think, and Michael's actually put in the chat bar that he doesn't think this is the right meeting to discuss uh to discuss those. Um but I, I think I do actually agree with Michael. Um but Mi- Michael, are you, are you, are you happy to discuss those outside of this meeting um as a separate, separate point?
Um possibly to discuss them, but um while I agree that we did have a meeting at our office, um no promises were made at that point and I don't see why that we will be making them in future, but um as, as I was about typing, I've declared my interest and I've always felt that I shouldn't be speaking on this subject at this board meeting because I do have a conflict of interest.
Well, that's, that's fully understood. Thank, thank you, Michael. Um Stuart, I, we also are not at the point where obviously the final designs for the projects have been um um set in stone. So there is um Tom, do you want to just explain, or is it Tom or is it Steve, that there will be another opportunity to go through detailed design and that we're not actually at that point yet?
Happy to, um Chair. The, the, the sort of dissatisfaction that, that Stuart talks about with the existing design and the width is obviously we've had to design or Gagarin, our appointed consultant, have had to design something that, that suits the constraints of the site. Now, I, I fully appreciate where Stuart's coming from. A wider bridge would have been absolutely more desirable. It would have been more uh pedestrian cyclist friendly, but the reason they've narrowed the, the bridge at that point um is obviously to encourage cyclists to dismount, to try and um design out that. But just to pick up on your wider point, Chair. Um you know, this isn't the final design. This is um a costed design that's been put into, plugged into the business case to see if it, it stacks up in essence, along with the other um designs that Steve referred to. Um once we secure the funding, um once the project is confirmed, um the next stage of the process will be for further engagement with regards to the stakeholders, for, for, you know, looking again at elements of the design if there's some that we consider aren't appropriate. Um speaking to experts such as the Canal and Rivers Trust to ensure that whatever is designed is appropriate and safe for the setting. Um and, and that will eventually lead to a, a final design that obviously moves forward to, to costs and construction. Um but yeah, completely agree with your point, Chair. It's not the final design and there'll be further opportunity to engage with the key stakeholders.
I thank you for clarifying that, Tom. Stuart, what, what we're being asked to um um to look at today is the reallocation of funding from the um the Long Eaton Junction scheme to the um, to the other um projects that are still running within the, within the Towns Fund. Um it's not in any sense talking about the final design of what those other projects are and there will be other opportunities to talk about those. But we do have to decide whether we are reallocating the money to those projects or not. And that is the purpose of this meeting or at this point on the agenda. And if we don't reallocate the money to those projects, then the money will simply um be lost to the Towns Fund project. So there will be an opportunity to discuss the detailed design uh, uh future meetings and also outside of the board meetings. Um but that isn't really what we're, what we're being asked to, to look at today.
Okay, um can I just say that um the internet went off at the council for several minutes? I've lost the thread a little bit. Um as regards the three million extra, um what is, I feel crying out is that we upgrade the path from the proposed Broad Street Bridge all the way to Midland Street. Now, if any of you haven't walked that route, I encourage you to park in Astecar Park and walk it and see it. Because if we're providing this bridge at Broad Street, it needs upgrading all the way so to Middle Street. So to me, the three million, that, that is crying out for it to be employed there.
Um but thank you for that. Um Tom, do you want to comment on that?
Um I can't commit, Chair, that there's sufficient funds to, to do all that Stuart asks for, but what I will commit to is that the, the bridge um it's not about just designing the new bridge, allowing for its construction to link to that point. There are wider improvements to the tow path and its setting that will need to be looked at as part of the scheme. Uh and that point is, is accepted.
Uh thank you, Tom. Um Maggie Throop?
Yeah, it's just really on that point, isn't it? The Canal, Canal and River Trust have done a lot of work improving many of the footpaths along Ayrshire Canal and other canals as well. So it's perhaps something that we can chat to, to the Canal and River Trust about to see if they're willing to put some investment in to uh to improve that for the foot, the canal tow path, uh as Stuart indicates, right to Midland Road. So I think that's something that perhaps isn't for this project, but in conjunction with it, we could get that funding from elsewhere.
Uh thank you, Maggie. And but I would say again, it's, it's about building relationships, isn't it? And you know, and we are working closely with Canals and River Trust on this project and we do have Tom, I'm sure you'll have the opportunity to, to ask them, ask, ask them whether that is possible.
Yeah, as you know, Chair, we have a national lead on the um, the design group for the, the bridge and um they will continue to be engaged with that process right through the uh, the more detailed design work and um absolutely pick up on Maggie's point, we can, we can talk to them about wider improvements that they, they may be able to, to undertake.
Thank you, Tom. Stuart, does that, does that answer your questions?
Not quite, I'm afraid. Um I know that Future Housing isn't exactly enamored with the ramp right in front of all their um lounges and, and bedrooms, just, just a couple of metres away from, from their, a load of their units. Um now I've proposed an alternative bridge, uh which occupies just the council land, the cul-de-sac of Britannia Road. Now, is this being considered? Has it been valued? Um is, is ACON going ahead with the design that it's got at the moment? Because we've already declared it pretty substandard.
Um Tom, is this, do you want to comment on, like, again, I think this just comes back to
I'll take this comment, Richard.
Final design stage. Steve?
Uh yes, absolutely. We, we're not at final design stage. The preliminary design, the, I just remind the board that the Britannia Bridge design is the one on which we received the letter of comfort from Futures Housing from. Now, obviously that was some time ago and we're looking to refresh that relationship. Uh but I'm just remind the board that Futures Housing gave us a letter of comfort on the basis of the original bridge design in that location. We've had no such confirmation about alternative bridge designs in that location. Given the timescale of the business case process, we've run through with the concept of the, of a basic bridge design in this location in order to be able to get a business case in, into place. And at the moment, we have no costing for Stuart's alternative. Um quite apart from any other considerations about uh, how that, that fits in with, with, with the wider process. So, uh again, I don't think this is an issue really for debate at the board. I'm happy to talk to Stuart about his alternative design. Um but, but that's not what we're asking at this moment in time. What we're asking is that we reallocate some of the capital funding that was previously allocated along England Green in order to cover the fact that actually any bridge over the canal is going to cost two and a half million pounds each.
Uh thank, thank you very much for clarifying that, Steve. And Stuart, I mean, you've got an offer there from Steve for you to be able to, you know, discuss, discuss your feelings and um proposals going forwards out, outside of this forum.
Right, I'd be delighted to, to do that. Thank you. Uh the, we've actually been listened to. Thank you.
Thanks, Stuart. And um thanks, Steve. Does anybody else have any other points or questions on reallocation of funding to the walking and cycling? Okay, Vaughn, Vaughn Morris?
Yeah. Sorry, yeah, thanks, Richard. All it is, it's leading on to the next point, really. Um it looks as though on item six, the stable block managed workspace project is going to have five hundred and forty thousand uh sorry, that five hundred and forty thousand would, would remain unallocated to any town deal project. Uh the things that we're talking about, improving tow paths and improving um the connection between Britannia Road Bridge and uh Midland Street, it, it could all do with widening three and a half metres. Um you'd have to increase the embankment slightly, but is that type of project, simple project really, something that the five hundred and forty hundred thousand could go towards?
Uh but thank you, Vaughn. Steve, do you, it, it might be worth you actually talking about the reallocation of funding as part of your answer to Vaughn on, on this?
Thank you, Chair. I think Vaughn has introduced us onto the next item, so I'll, I'll cover the next item. Um so um following from the, if, if the board is, is minded to uh pursue with the, the previous two items, it would leave the five hundred and forty thousand pounds unallocated uh at that point. Um looking as to where we could use that money within the framework of the uh existing business cases and value for money assessments that we've had. Um we couldn't allocate it to the West Park Leisure Hub because the West Park Leisure Hub business case is too finely balanced. As in, it would cease to be value for money if we put additional money into it. And we're pretty much in the same scenario with the Galaxy Road project. The project that we have on the table, which has a very strong value for money case and therefore can absorb additional expenditure without causing, without undermining the value for money case, is actually the Stable Block project. That's the strongest value for money project that we have within the whole Long Eaton Town Deal. So the, the recommendation um before the board is that we utilize that money within what is an a, a, an existing costed and value for money assessed project on the basis that we are we know, I wouldn't say we're confident, as, as in, we absolutely know that we'll still be able to demonstrate a very strong value for money pro- project um as, as a result of that. If we wanted to progress any other options at this stage, we would have to design and cost the additional elements which, which people feel that they are asking for and then assess whether or not they had any impact on the value for money proposals that are going ahead at the moment. And regrettably, that's why I wouldn't recommend introducing new elements at this point. It's again, it's a time uh situation, which is that uh to, to cost up a new element to, to cost up a new element all's existing business case processes to add that new element into the business case. I honestly think that we will be putting those business cases at risk at this point. Because we're, as I've, I've indicated quite clearly at this meeting, we're already extraordinarily close to the wire in terms of actually getting business cases through and approved and project summaries confirmed to government within the time scales allowed.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to ask Steve about the reallocation of the money to the Stable Block project? Okay, I can't, I can't see anybody there. Steve, can I, can I just clarify the, the situation on, on this? Because I'm not sure everybody will be fully aware. So the Ayrshire Borough Council, because Stable Block is an Ayrshire Borough Council asset, have actually put some of their own work, putting a substantial amount of Ayrshire Borough Council funding into match fund the Stable Block project. So the five hundred and forty thousand is basically reducing the amount of match funding that Ayrshire Borough Council will be putting into the Stable Block project. Can I ask how much are Ayrshire Borough Council still contributing? Because it doesn't, it doesn't remove your liability for this, does it?
No, thank you, Chad. No, it doesn't. There would still be a hundred and fifty nine thousand pound contribution from the council. And that's assuming that the project can be retained within its existing budget limits. We would always like a little bit extra on top to allow for contingency on this project. But yes, it's, that's exactly the case. The Borough Council has currently committed from its capital programme to gap fund this, to core fund this, this project. The additional allocation would allow the council to use those capital funds to deliver public good elsewhere. But we would, the council would still have to be putting capital funds to the tune of a hundred and sixty thousand into this project to make, in order to make its original budget function. And I'm happy to defer to Tom, who of course is project managing this.
Thank you. I just wanted to make the point that the figure Steve's refers to as the council's contribution is subject to a successful outcome from the, the council's bid to the, the Public Sector Decarbonisation Fund. If that were to be unsuccessful for any reason, the council's contribution would have to increase. I haven't got the exact figure in front of me, but it's, it's nearer to three hundred thousand. So it was just to make that point that it is contingent upon that, that bid being successful. It would change if it were to be rejected for any reason, Chad.
Thank you, Tom. Maggie Throop?
Thank you, Chad. Just going back to Steve's very good point about the reallocation of the Ayrshire Borough Council capital funding to other projects for public good. Is there something specific in mind that then we can feel that actually it's being spent in another way that's going to benefit Ron? It's just been a bit here and a bit there. So I think if we're putting a, quite a huge amount of money back into the Stable Block project, it'd be good to know that that funding is going to make significant difference in another part of the borough.
Thank you, Maggie. Steve, before you come in on that, we've obviously spoken earlier in this meeting about potential other projects at Long Eaton Green. Is this something that could be, that, that would have to be done outside of the, the Towns Fund project? So, you know, building on what Maggie's just said there, is this potentially something that could be used for that?
So, thank you, sorry, thank you, Chad. There's a limit to what I can say on this because I'm not in control of the council's overall budget. So I'm thanking Maggie for, for her query. And I think my only answer I can give to that is that that's a position that's going to be considered through the council's budget process, which is of course a formal, public, open and accountable process. But I would support, agree with your point, Chad, that, that clearly it, it's not a town deal, part of a town deal process.
Thank you, Steve. Maggie, is that, does that answer what?
I'm, I'm not surprised at the answer because I do understand the processes. But it'd be quite good to know when it's gone through the budgeting process, if this board could have feedback as to, you know, where that reallocation of money went. I think it's quite good, you know, when we're spending a lot of public funds for the Towns Fund deals and we've been moving it around different projects, that when we've released funds from one project to go back into the council's pot, that it's actually, you know, quite good to know where it's being spent for the taxpayers' point of view. I think it would help us all know that the money has been put to public good.
Thank you, Maggie. So I can just, so what you're asking is that we just get feedback to the, to the board about how the council has actually allocated and spent that money that's, that's gone back?
Yeah, that'd be really good, yeah.
Yeah. Jeremy?
Thank you, Richard. Well, you know, I understand the, the concept behind that query. But of course, individual pound coins don't have any particular project name on them. So it would be hard to say what particular things that particular reallocation would go to, although one could perhaps contrive something. But I, I'd like to make a point about the, my understanding of the philosophy behind the town of projects in their entirety. So we were lucky to have the opportunity to bid for nearly twenty five million. And when we did so there, even at the time, with the costs as we understood them at the time, it was a struggle to fit everything in. And of course, we've had rampant inflation since, as we've acknowledged several times. I don't think it's the underlying philosophy of the town of projects for local authorities to put their own money in to make, to make the schemes work. But we, Ayrshire did do so, or said it would do so on the Stable Block. So I think conceptually it is right that subsidy for the borough does come down. Because, you know, it's not intended that local authorities put money in that way. In terms of the council's budget, as, as has been said, there's a separate process for that. The budget would be agreed, I think, on the fourth of March, perhaps the third, fourth of March. And that budget will show the capital programme of the council and the funding thereof. But it won't show specific sources, e.g. the reallocation from this project. Nevertheless, we can give feedback on the council's budget. And I'm sure people then see what excellent value for money the council is delivering. So, Richard, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jeremy. Gary Smith?
Yes, thank you, Richard. I just wanted to follow up.
Angelica, are you, are you back with us now, please? Okay.
Richard, Richard, perhaps?
I've just got back in.
Just back in time. I was about to do a vote by exception, but as soon as you're back, we'll, we'll do the full roll call vote.
Yep, no problem at all. councillor Hart?
Yeah, approve.
Maggie Throop?
Approve.
Councillor Tony King?
Approve.
Morin Vieira?
Approve.
Ian Viles?
Approve.
Vaughan Morris?
Approve.
Keith Reedman?
Agree.
Michael Luckin?
Approve.
Pete Wern? Hello, Pete? I'll come back. Stuart Allen?
Agreed.
James Gregory?
Approved.
Andrew Saville?
Approved.
Pete, are you back with us yet? No. Richard Ledger?
Approved.
Thank you. Well, that's, that's carried. It's all agreed.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For that, Angelica. So with, with unanimous vote with the exception of Pete, who we couldn't, couldn't get a hold of. So thank you very much, everybody, for your support on that. If we could move on to the next item on the agenda then, please, which is, Tom's going to give us an update on where we are with various projects. Tom had it.
Thank you, Chad. We've discussed quite a lot of detail regarding a number of the projects today in the report that covered the reallocation. So I'll just go through the pertinent updates and as usual, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take those. Okay, starting with the Stable Block. Officers have dealt with a great number of queries that have come about as part of the clarification exercise for the tender that was submitted for the scheme. I'm now pleased to say we have identified a principal contractor, though that's not yet been communicated to them. So hopefully that's something I can, I can pass on at the next meeting. We still expect or still await an answer with regards to the Public Sector Decarbonisation Scheme bid that I mentioned. Either way, the project adjustment will ensure that there is suitable funding for the project to proceed. The council awaits its application, its own application to the planning and listed building consent provisions that were sought. And as Steve's mentioned earlier, it's anticipated that will be at the beginning of February. The full business case is the next step for this one, Chad. We obviously need to plug in the, the final costings to that. That is an internal process, albeit, although it will be verified by Quad in advance. And the good news is that we're now looking with the contractor at a potential start on site in early April. Any questions on the Stable Block?
Move on, Tom?
Okay, let's move on. We've progressed the design to river stage three. Since the last board meeting, flood risk assessments have now been complete. There's been an initial ecology survey undertaken and there's some further work on that to now be carried out in May. Site investigation work is progressing. We have paused on the planning sort of status of that scheme in, in relation to the planning application that will be required because it's so intrinsically linked to the bridge design. Clearly, we're waiting for the results of the walking and cycling outline business case to be assured first. So we know that the project is confirmed and then it's envisaged it will progress to a, a full planning application for that scheme and the bridge design once completed.
Any questions on, on that? Stuart Allen?
I think you know that Vaughan and I are fundamentally opposed to option three on health and safety grounds. I draw the attention to the fact that the path in West Park is three point five metres wide. At weekends, lots of traffic, people, you, you overflow onto the grass. Now, the tow path at the Lawrence, where it joins Lawrence Road, is two point six metres wide. Near the lock, it's two point seven metres, not, not three point five. So I've never, ever seen a mobility scooter on the tow path. I've seen lots of cycles, cyclists, lots of pedestrians, but never, ever a mobility scooter. I asked myself why? Now, people who use mobility scooters are infirm. They have limited movement. They have heart conditions. And I, I believe that it's risk aversion. They'd never use the tow path because if they fell in, they'd be unable to climb out or they'd have a heart failure. Now, Marcus has gone on, Marcus Challenger, about Regent's Canal. I've had a very good look at that. I've had a look at the videos on, on YouTube and I've had a look at Google Maps. And the traffic on it is absolutely minimal. There's, there's, there's no, no, no traffic at all. So when he waxes and wanes about, we'll be safe having mobility scooters going along the tow path. We'll have two-way traffic, we'll have cyclists and an ever increasing number of youngsters on e-bikes whizzing around. It is fundamentally flawed. Now, Vaughan has another opinion on this danger, particularly the danger for, for us people on, on this committee. So can I hand it over to Vaughan?
Stuart, do you, do you want to let Tom come back, back on this? And Tom, again, you know, is, is, is this the right time? There will be, there will be opportunity to discuss this further.
Absolutely, Chad. I don't want to appear dismissive of any of the concerns raised because some of which, you know, I share and they'll need to be ironed out in the, the next sort of design stage. The proposal we have in front of us is for the bridge is, is the one that was accepted by all of the key stakeholders, which was, was critical because as you know, we needed consent from all stakeholders. It isn't a final design. There's lots of work to be done to address risks, to make sure that whatever we propose, of course, we'd want to be safe for, for the users. And there'll be further opportunity through design meetings, through further engagement with those stakeholders to discuss a number of these detailed concerns. And they will be mitigated, of course, wherever possible, to ensure that whatever is constructed is, is safe for use. And that's the only response I'm able to provide at this time.
Thank you, Tom. Vaughan, did you want to, did you want to come in at this point?
Very briefly, all it is under, under health and safety legislation, anybody on a board, anybody who alters a design, makes decisions, can be seen as the designer, the designer, a designer. So that's all it was. Just when we make decisions, just bear that in mind. It's not going to be just the architect who gets the blame or, you know, whatever. It's, we, we can all be involved. That's all. We can all be involved in it. Thanks.
Thank, thank you, Vaughan. And, you know, the, the plan is for us to create something that's fabulous and beautiful and contributes to the town. And, you know, I think as a board, we all want to be involved in something that we can be proud of going, going forwards. Tom, I think we can, can, can we say to Vaughan and Stuart that they will be further involved at, at all stages of the design and that their, their input will be, will be welcomed?
Absolutely. And I, you know, I would like to make the point, we, we are employing competent professional designers who are engaging with, with stakeholders such as the Canal and Rivers Trust that, you know, they are the expert. They manage thousands of kilometres, as a matter of fact, probably of, of, of local sort of national tow path networks. And of course, we will continue to address these concerns with them, but, you know, and wherever possible, we'll engage with, with, with all relevant stakeholders that we can, we can invite that discussion.
Thank you, Tom. Vaughan?
Quickly, I'd just let you know, I've asked the Canal and River Trust on the freedom of information for their records about drownings in the local waterways. They've not had a reply yet, but I'll report back as soon as I hear any news on that.
That would be, that would be interesting to hear, Vaughan. Thank you. And Stuart?
Yes, there's a fundamental flaw in the Gagarin design. When we designed the bridge at the lock, if you came from West Park and wanted to go south towards Trent Lock, you actually turned from the end of the bridge, did a U-turn and you did it against the wall. So it's fundamentally safe. Now, Gagarin puts you at the end of the bridge and it turns you straight round in a U-turn at the lock. And it's a high wall there as well. So if you fell in there, you'd have to struggle several metres south to extract yourself out of the thing. So at the very least, it'll need an extremely strong fence, dog-proof, toddler-proof, everything else proof all along the side of the lock there. And I suspect that Canal and River Trust will draw the same conclusion that they can't maintain the lock adequately with that there. So Gagarin's design needs to be changed, that such that you turn at the end and, and then turn towards the factory wall.
Okay. Stuart, obviously both yourself and Vaughan have been involved in design meetings with Gagarin. So, you know, you're, you've got information and party to everything that's happened so far, which the rest of the board actually aren't. Which means this really isn't the best place to talk about this. You've got a commitment from Tom that yourself and Vaughan will be involved in all of the discussions and the, and the meetings going forwards. And you will have an opportunity to, to raise these issues with the designers. I think that's all, that's all that we can offer you at the moment, Stuart.
And, and just to reassure Stuart, Chair, there is no decision being taken today by the board regarding the business case for this scheme. That is indeed coming forward next month. The decision today is simply to reallocate funds. And as Steve mentioned, a number of options have been costed. We've obviously proceeded with the higher costs and that's the funding that will be secured to make sure the project is a goer. And, and that is all we're asking the board to consider today in terms of that funding reallocation.
Which we've already approved.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Stuart. If there's nothing else on walking and cycling, do you want to move on to the next project then please, Tom?
I will do. That was the waterfront which fell under the, the West Park Leisure Hub. I was referring to that, Chair. That is the one that we're sort of paused on, waiting for the Broad Street Bridge design to progress. The other part of that project, as you'll be aware, is the, the West Park Events Field. Similar to the stable block, that is going to a, a meeting of the planning committee for determination early February. There will be a similar need to develop the full business case for that scheme in conjunction with the waterfront because it forms part of the same project and that will need to go through the same local assurance process and then be considered by the council's Section 151 officer.
Any, any questions regarding that? Hey, Tom?
Okay, moving on to, to Galaxy Row. There's been further discussions with the council's external legal party regarding further slight amendments to the, the statement of reasons. Work now turns to preparation for the next step of the CPO process. And that will be to serve what we call RFI notices on the target properties that the, the scheme is looking to acquire. Just for everyone's information, RFI notices, it's a request for, for further information from the property owners. We've done desktop searches and searches on all the legal titles, but this is the formal process to serve them with notice to provide the council with any further information that will be, may be relevant to the transactional, the conveyance. The next step for that then will be to, to progress with making the actual CPO order for that being drawn up and serving fine notices on the, the property owners. On the other side of this, Chair, we've also been progressing further work for the procurement process, for getting a, a developer on board for the scheme. We've also been negotiating and talking to our appointed planning consultant with regards to changes being made and a submission being made for the, the outline planning application. Any questions on that one, Chair?
Nothing, nothing on that, Tom?
Okay, moving on. It was then the, the walking and cycling. I think if you're happy, Chair, we've, we've discussed those in enough detail. We know the processes for those and there'll be a, an outline business case, hopefully to be approved by the council executive next month with a, a report to the board to authorise the, the project summary documents.
Thank you, Tom. I think that's, that's, that's all, everything, isn't it?
It is. Obviously, there's the, the ongoing process with, with Quad for the, the highway scheme, the two highway schemes. Well, it's one highway scheme, so I apologise. And that is the High Street and the Tumworth Road. That's going through that process and officers will continue to, to deal with Quad over any queries they've got regarding the business case.
Okay. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to ask Tom about a current update on progress? Okay, all right. Thank, thank you very much, Tom. We're going to go on to the next part, which is communications plan. And Stuart, you've popped up on my screen, so I take it. You're, you're going to present where we are on this, please.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'll try and keep it short and, and give you a, a sort of update on some of the things and challenges that comms have been dealing with. The first thing is that certainly January, and thanks to the project champions that were live on Ayrwash Sound for the various projects, and that included yourself, Richard, James Gregory, Carol Hart, and I think last up is Ian Viles on the stable block. And that, that, that was good to give us valuable publicity and update the, the, the public on the various projects. We've been around all the retail points and cafes this month. Reason being, as you know, space is limited through the Christmas period trading, particularly in supermarkets. So we've been round everywhere to reinstate the various pop-up banners and leaflets, particularly in Tesco, Asda, Aldi and numerous cafes around the town. Currently, we are preparing the content for the next issue of ABC today. So there'll be a full page on the Long Eaton Town Deal projects. And the spring issue, that's due to be delivered to all households in Long Eaton and throughout Ayrwash from Monday, the 5th of March. So as I say, a full, full page there on the Long Eaton Town Deal projects. Next week, we will be releasing an artist's impression video walk around of the stable block. So that will be up on social media next week and we hope to get a, a, a good response there. If the business cases are all on track, which we, we, we hope they are, towards the end of the month, we will promote the cycling and walking network and also the High Street projects. We're also looking to schedule a Long Eaton Town Deal promotional activity at Ayrwash Business Park networking events to be held in the spring and the autumn. Those dates are still to be confirmed, Richard, but there's a possible opportunity there for project champions to, to attend. Lastly, as you'll know, previous publicity, the communications team, communications team have been making use of the council's assets to promote the backing Long Eaton and delivering town centre regeneration message. As you know, this is a cost-effective, cost-effective way of getting the message out. And we're now carrying out some design and research to sticker refuse bins in the Long Eaton area with a generic, a generic Long Eaton Town Deal message. So that's, that's at the early stages. But another opportunity to, to get the message out to the doorstep. And that's it, Richard, from comms.
Thank you very much, Stuart. And, you know, we'd be, with my partnership hat on and obviously Ian's in the meeting as well. You know, we'd be delighted to have you at the, at the business networking events. And I think it'd be a good opportunity to talk about, talk about what's happening. Pete Wern?
Yeah, quick question. We have over 800 members at the 50+ Forum and we, we send out information to them four times a year by email and snow mail through Derbyshire County Council who fund this. Would it be possible to include a publicity leaflet about Town Deal Board, either in digital form, on email or in hardback form? I could supply obviously the contact at Derbyshire County Council who do the mailing out.
A very simple answer to that, Pete, and it's yes.
That's perfect. Shall I email you? I think I've got contact.
Yeah, just email me direct, Pete, and we'll get that organised.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the offer of doing that, Pete. That's much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Okay. Does anybody else have any, any questions or comments for Stuart regarding communications? Okay, Stuart, as always, I'm really impressed with what you guys are, are doing, doing for this. You know, it's, congratulations and keep up the good work. But thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Chair.
Okay, just leaves us with the date of the next meeting, which is Friday, the 24th of February, again at half past nine. Thank you all for attending today. I'm sorry we've overrun a, a little bit. And enjoy the rest of your birthday, Maggie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Still got, still got work to do before I can relax.
You, you've not stepped up to do the, any questions at Dolly Abbey?